Brady.
Morning.
Oh, we gotta wait for Beth. So, we will begin?
Everybody left you as soon as you said. Oh, Jan's starting, let's go.
Yeah, I'm scary and they left the room. Scaring them off.
You do have that wooden hammer.
I do. But it's right next to one of these. Yes.
Well, the bulbs are expensive.
This is interesting, they're really expensive, but they last forever.
We'll see what that means.
I know.
But I guess they are next to.
It is amazing.
Yeah, it cost me about five thousand to switch over at the gallery.
Too much related to what? Oh, just for privacy. As an elected official or a board member. The Human Service Advisory Board.
I use my M-word. So Brady?
January first, twenty fifteen, right?
It's coming.
Brady can take notes.
Yeah.
There's enough of us, we can start with the pledge.
Yeah, okay. Well, Myron's got here.
How do you get lawn to grow on Clay County? Cook County clay soil.
In Clay County? Yeah, go to Clay County. Well, first you put a top dressing out of black dirt. That's how it affects.
How thick do you have to do it?
Okay, Myron, I'm calling the board to order.
I got way late in the hall.
Yeah, you should never go to the house too.
We're gonna put a bivvy right in the corner here so we don't have to leave.
Maybe you should have someone who zooms up and gathers.
Yes, okay. I would like to call the Cook County Regular Board of Commissioners, meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to add on to announce a retirement and then ask to fill a position.
Now to retirement, is that what's it?
Is it a retirement or a?
Resignation.
Huh?
A resignation.
A resignation, sorry.
A retirement and a resignation?
No, a resignation and a request to fill a position.
Thank you. So, should we call that six? Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Yes?
Madam Chair, I give an administrator's report under Employee Concerns.
Great, thank you. Do we hear a motion to accept the agenda? So move.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment. I do not see anyone here for public comment. So, we'll move into the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion, Commissioner DeKerk.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're running a little bit above. But Rena, you're here, so this is great. Rena, you will speak to Communications. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm gonna give you just a little bit of context first before I actually get to the request. It's been on our department agenda for a while to do some cabling work and audiovisual cabling at the community center to make that more usable. And as we started looking at that, it seemed like there was a couple of other opportunities we could take advantage of at the same time. One of those is, as long as we're recabling everything, is to set up an emergency operations center. And so Valerie Marasco, our Emergency Management Director, has submitted some grants to pay for some of those pieces of it. By that I mean like, you know, big screen TVs and other kinds of things that she would need to run an emergency operations center. So, we would be taking into the requirements what we're gonna do now and into that into effect of making sure that we cabled for all those possibilities and multiple people. And at the same time, also looking at the opportunity to do something that we've needed to do for a while here, and that is provide a backup data center for this room here so that if something ever happened to this building, we would have a place where we could relocate employees. In order to do that, we needed some changes in our fiber structure. So, I've been working with the state of Minnesota and NESC, who provides our fiber, to look at what those options are. And what we have currently today are two fiber connections that come into our data center here. And they provide us with a redundant path down the shore, at least starting at about mile marker sixty, they do, at Highway one. So, they go down there and one of them splits and goes up through Hibbing and the other one goes down through Duluth. And so, we have a redundant path through the world as long as, in those fifty miles, we don't get a fiber cut. But, you know, that's better than what we had. But they both come into this building, which is sort of a problem. So, what NESC is gonna do for us is take one of those fibers and swing it over to the LEC. So, now we have one going into the LEC, we have one coming into this building, and then additionally, they're gonna get us some dark fiber, which is this fiber we can use. Nobody else is on it, so it's very secure. Two strands of it from the LEC to the community center. And what that does for us is, for the first time, it creates a loop that we have between all of our buildings now. So, if this building goes down or we have a problem with equipment here, we can swing over to that one and it can take control. So, we can, although we can't fix that fifty mile, you know, there's only one highway here, we can, in effect, control many more outages that might happen just within our system here. That, so that involves us building a little bit of a data center, but we're handling that with Brian's staff, who's gonna be building that out for us. And a few thousand dollars from the building fund to put air conditioning. And then my budget will, my budget will pay for the switches and whatever. And then over time, we may have a completely redundant thing there that's not in this project. So, all that to say, the state and NESC are going to pay to do all of that fiber work. We are, we have no out-of-pocket costs for that, for them to move those fiber lines. And the last I heard, that was around eight or ten thousand dollars. They're picking that up. So, the part that I'm in here to request today is now we're going to have a leased line, kind of like a phone line, you know, connecting buildings, whatever. It's a leased line, two high-speed fibers between the LEC and the community center. It's almost a mile of fiber. And so, we will have a monthly cost for that lease, and that's what this is about. And it's not budgeted, so I came in to talk about it rather than just do it. So, the request, just before I go on, does anybody have any questions about anything I've explained? Okay. So, the request is to approve the service agreement, which was in the agenda notes, meeting notes, to approve the service agreement with Northeast Service Cooperative for two dedicated high-speed fibers between the law enforcement center and the community center. It's a sixty-month lease at a cost of two hundred and fifty dollars per month. So, for the remainder of this year, it's, at the most, depending if they get it in in June, is about fifteen hundred dollars additional cost for this year. And then it would be ongoing, three thousand dollars a year as part of our utility stuff. That's request.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Burschine, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's very logical and thank you. It's really needed and I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner DeKerk?
Thanks Rena, as always. I'm kinda reminiscing over the last four years of the services and safeties that you have enacted and put in. And yes, you're asking for an increase in budget, but as I've noticed over the years, when it comes to the end of the year, you've somehow massaged your budget to absorb these things and continue to offer. And so, I know, I appreciate the work that you do. I appreciate the forward-thinking. I appreciate that you're always looking out. As a person with anxiety, I always have a worst-case scenario outlook in my head, so I'm not saying you have anxiety, but you always solve all of my issues of what if this building falls to the ground one day, what are we gonna do and how does that work? So, thank you. I know it's a small cost, but all those costs add up. And I know that you're already looking at how you're gonna fill your budget when it comes up, 'cause we're gonna start those discussions even more detailed soon, so thank you.
Thank you. And it's only been three years. I know it probably feels like four, but.
It's four for me.
Four for her.
Oh, three for you.
Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think this is really a wonderful move in light of what's happening with the data in the world. And we want to be protected here, obviously. Hopefully, nothing's gonna go awry here, but it's good to have backups to the backups. So, I appreciate all the work you've put into it. And I know that you will somehow, yes, work on your budget and make it work too. So, hopefully, we can assist you if you have to have help, but I know that you'll work on that to the best of your ability. So, you think this will start sometime in the next few months?
Actually, NESC will probably be out sometime in June. It's starting to get to construction season. Brian's staff will probably start building the server room in the next week or so, and we'll be ready to roll out there. And we'll start, we'll do all of the cabling and audiovisual stuff in there. So, trying to get my staff off of other projects right now so we can get to that.
Well, this is a fabulous donation in terms of working with the state and with this company. I mean, that's, you've done some background work with them, I bet.
The NESC is, you know, Northeast Service Cooperative. It's sort of, I mean, it's instituted in state statute to help counties. Jim Johnson at the state is the network director, and he paid for, he's paying for half of it, so, somebody I've worked with for many years. So, he does a lot for counties, so, yes.
Wonderful.
Yep, it is.
Great, thank you. Commissioner DeKerk?
Motion to approve NESC fiber service agreement.
Second?
Thank you. And I just wanted to add that, that I, this does add three thousand dollars a year to our costs, but I think we get an enormous benefit from that. So, I just wanted, if you could just summarize for me the benefits, 'cause I think they're pretty big. That emergency operations piece is big in and of itself. We haven't had that before, or what we've had before hasn't had access to certain things. You could just maybe talk a little bit more about that.
So, the emergency operations center piece of this, currently our EOC is in the break room at the sheriff's office, and you can have about six people in there. So, you know, we don't have big-screen monitors to track things and the, really, the room, and it's a secure building, so people coming and going is very difficult. The community center actually works very well for an EOC because it has a commercial kitchen in it, it has lots of parking around it, there's additional space that you could set up a media room, and we'll be cabling for that as well. You know, we can picture up above large-screen TVs, monitors in there, and then when we're not using it ninety-five percent of the time, those could be used for other meetings, for conferences or other things too. So, it brings a lot of value. We'll also be doing other cabling that are wireless, putting more places where people can plug in their computers. So, let's just say, for whatever reason this building went down, people with laptops could go over there and be in our network and could be set up to work temporarily over there. And then whatever, we'll try to build in extra capacity for whatever other things might happen to that building. But it gives us the ability to do a lot with one project on a lot of different fronts, for the community center, for my risk-management pieces of making sure we have maximum uptime and for emergency management.
Great, thank you. Anything else ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. And then next on our agenda is Elena Hansel, who is going to give us a presentation.
Sorry.
The radio, you know, build it as a presentation. But it's gonna be lovely nonetheless, something we've been waiting for for a long time.
Yeah, so thank you for having me. And I know Commissioner Burschine, I don't know if you wanna start the conversation?
Well, I could start.
And I'll jump in?
Whatever, okay.
Or what you would like?
Yeah, you could be the resource. We're bringing before you a board action request for two motions, and one being to adopt the Lake Superior North Watershed Comprehensive One Watershed One Plan, acronym ONE W-ONE P. And this would therefore be the water management plan for the county and the area that it covers. And then the second motion would be to enter into a memorandum of agreement, and I will just add that we had a telephone conference a week or so ago with representatives of the policy committee, which I'm on, and a representative from Lake County and the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. So, that memorandum of agreement would be between Lake County, Lake County's Soil and Water Conservation District Board, and Cook County Soil and Water Commissioners, Conservation District Board, and that would then implement this plan, which is ONE W-T-P. So, there's a policy committee, which I have been serving on. I'd just like to mention that I've had the opportunity to appear with the group in St. Paul to make a presentation on the water, to the Water Council, Minnesota Water Council, I believe, at board. And also, if you recall, and I'm sure you do, that Mr. Gamble had worked on this previously, and he accepted, along with others, an award from the Minnesota Counties Association, or Association of Minnesota Counties, for the exemplary work and collaboration and what people could do. And reading through it, it's comprehensive, it's very needed, and I think we're starting where the greatest need is, and that's to take a look at our urban areas, which are Grand Marais, Silver Bay, and Two Harbors. And everyone knows in Grand Marais that we have some water management issues with water runoff, so hopefully, this will help with that process. Elena, you could add anything.
Thank you. And we did, yeah, we've gone through the process of getting this memorandum of agreement. Cook County Soil and Water Conservation District Board met last week, two weeks ago? Sorry, I apologize, the first Thursday of the month. And they did approve the MOA and the resolution, and so that's been signed by our Cook SWCD Board, and County Attorney Hickin has reviewed it on behalf of the county and the SWCD, so that, she did put her stamp of okay on it. And then I know Lake County SWCD has also approved signing the MOA and the resolution, and then Lake County Commissioners are not, their meeting's not till next week for approval. So, that's where we're at, so everybody seems to be okay, so that's why we're here before today.
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling, questions or comments?
Well, I'm glad that you're okay, because we'll be okay.
Okay, good.
You've done a lot of hard work on this and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We all live in an area where we have water running constantly, here and there, and then like Commissioner Burschine mentioned, that the city itself has some water issues, so moving forward with this, then what would be the, kind of the first step after the approval of this?
So, that's a great question. So, once this gets approved, we then send, of course, everything to Bowser, to the Board of Water and Soil Resources. They're like, great, you're completely done, it's adopted. And so, much like our county water plan, you know, it needs to just, it's a plan, so it's to be used by departments as a resource for planning. There are gonna be meetings that are gonna take place by the North Shore Management Board. We just met yesterday. They were awarded a grant to bring all the entities together that are part of this plan, so we can all plan together as a group, different agencies, try to maybe come up with some ideas to start looking for funding, and so just help do some strategic planning. So, that will start happening in June, mid-June, and so we start moving forward. We're already starting to work for Cook SWCD, well, on Lake, we're already working with the urban nodes identified, the larger ones, so that's Two Harbors, Silver Bay, and Grand Marais, and defining and working through a stormwater management plan. So, we kinda just started already. So, what we do is just look at projects and go.
Great, great work, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeKerk?
I'm just really glad that we're beating Lake County to the resolution.
Yes. Great. Do I hear a motion? And it could be one motion, two motions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Lake Superior North Watershed Comprehensive Plan, One Watershed One Plan, excuse me, as the water management plan for the area it covers.
You wanna do the second one also?
Oh, we can do two at a time, thank you, okay. And I would like to make a second motion requesting that Cook County enter into a memorandum of agreement with Lake County, Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District, and Cook County Soil and Water Conservation District to implement the LS and M ONE W-I-P, ONE P.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, for years of hard work.
Yeah. It's quite an accomplishment.
Call Carrie and tell her we did it.
Well, so, thank you.
Okay. Number six, Brady, you wanna tell us about a resignation?
Yeah, so Karen Blackburn submitted her resignation this morning. She's taking the position as Director of Higher Ed.
Oh, that's cool and sad and exciting.
I know.
Yeah, so I would, yeah. So, I'd like to accept her resignation with regret and then authorize me to start the hiring process.
The search process? Great, thank you. So, Commissioner Sterling, did you want to?
Discuss? I guess there's nothing to discuss.
No.
Well, we just wish her well. Motion to approve resignation and for hiring replacement.
Second?
Thank you. And did you wanna add with regret?
With regret.
Thank you.
And I also wanna mention, I know that is often the question when we have these resignations, have we looked into whether or not we need to replace it? And I think that we all are well aware that that office is extremely busy, and we are already doing a lot of juggling, and a lot of people made payments last week, thank you very much, and that makes you all very busy in there, and the election is coming up, so I hope she's staying for like two weeks. Good, thank you.
Three to the election, yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I may persuade her to take phone calls and come back from time to time.
What kind of candy can we use to persuade her? Does she like dark chocolate?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think so.
It's too late for that?
No, just a keeper for another week or two.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, employee concerns, Commissioner concerns, and then we'll take administrative report. Commissioner DeKerk?
I have one as soon as I pull up my notes.
Okay.
So, the beginning of this year, we approved the budgets for the fire departments, and Maple Hill was in here, and we did a small reduction to their budget, so I just wanted to give you all an update. They need to repair the road in front of the hall, just before Headstrom's, if you're familiar with going up the trail, it's the Headstrom Hall, and they did receive a bid of nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. They do not have the budgeting for that. One other thing that the treasurer pointed out to me is they believe that they are the only fire department in the county that has a porta potty instead of a plum facility. So, if you can all imagine being in your wildfire gear and having to use the bathroom, I won't go into too much detail. So, Brady, I know for other fire departments, we have done loans, low-interest loans and other things. Could you, for maybe next week's meeting, bring to us some options for them of what we can do to kinda help them out? They do need to do this this year, the road is really bad, and fire engines do need to get out of the hall and on to the regular road. So, if we could just look at that and see what we can do to help them out. They do send out their campaign letter in August to ask for funding for this, so yes, if you're watching us, I am begging the residents to help out a little bit, I know you do. I know you all come together for this, so that is just the update that I have for all of you. They also need a special washer and dryer for their turnout gear, which they don't have. So, that's the update I have from the fire department. If we could get that information and have a discussion on that, that would be great.
Thank you. Other Commissioner concerned reports or Commissioner reports. Okay. Administrator report, Mr. Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update on things that are going on that don't require your action now, but you still need to know that they're happening. In addition to the position activity that you heard about in the Health and Human Service meeting, and regrettably, the vacancy that we've got in the auditor's office, we have currently open, the Assistant County Engineer position is still open. We routinely, periodically go and spend some time and money advertising that position, and sometimes it's just available and open. We have the YMCA Custodial Maintenance Position, we've been interviewing this week, and hopefully I have some, have something for you next week. The three positions up in Health and Human Services, we already talked about. The Aquatic Invasive Species is interviewing for three summer part-time positions. And Dispatcher Jailer, we have two positions that we need to fill and we're interviewing next week. June fifth, Josh mentioned, the Northland Foundation is having the community listening sessions from ten to two, and those will be posted on the next meeting agenda as a meeting where there may be a quorum of commissioners. And I just forwarded again the email from Mary about the schedule for the day. There's a different session from ten to eleven, eleven to twelve, and one to two, and you can respond yourselves or coordinate through Julie, and she'll respond for you.
Where's that held?
I believe. I have it here. Grand Marais City Council Chambers. It'll be June fifth, so you'll have the email, and if you're gonna be able to participate, feel free to contact her directly or contact through myself or Julie. The Communications Committee and implementation of the communication standard is moving forward. We have, now that we've got a group, Valerie and I have scheduled to meet on a regular basis as an administrative department. She's gonna meet with some of our, with Judy and Julie and myself on a regular basis so that we can talk about bringing some consistency to our recruitment for positions and our use of social media to do that, so those are some things that we're taking a look at. Internally, we're doing a lot of review of media releases or information or review, watching the stuff that's going out on Facebook and responding to it with factual information. A lot of that stuff is happening via email and coordination in the background, so essentially, if you ever have a question, get it to somebody on the Communications Committee, and we'll work it until we get the context and the current answer, and the correct answer for you. So, that's what we're doing there. Strategic planning, Valerie and Rena hosted three sessions with county employees to review the work done by the commissioners and the mat team in the development of mission, vision, and values. And then we actually held a makeup session last Friday, so they conducted four sessions. And they got some really good feedback on the work that we'd done on mission and vision, and will be wordsmithing as a communications department and bringing you, bringing you something to take a look at here in the next couple of weeks. They also identified the chief obstacles to them doing their work and spent some time talking about what it is they need to be able to do their work more efficiently, because the goal of strategic planning is not to come up with a mission statement that looks good on letterhead. The goal is to come up with a mission statement that directs the work we do here as public servants every day in, throughout Cook County. So, our goal is to turn that into something that influences and is considered for all members of this organization in all the work that we do. I'd take any questions if you have any, but that's what I have for an update. Can I take any questions, if you have any, but that's what I have for an update.
Great. Thank you for that update, and maybe before I take it to questions, I'm thinking that this might be a good report to add, under our Commissioner reports every meeting, and all of us can gracefully bow out if we have nothing to report. It's, you know, no shame if you have nothing to report, but it is an opportunity that you wouldn't otherwise think of, that you might have something if it's on the agenda, so you can perhaps comment on that too. So are there any questions or comments for Jeff, for that idea? Commissioner Burschine, any thoughts?
No, I think that's a real good way to approach it, and thank you, and it's very important, I see as an organization, that we, you know, we're somewhat consistent with our messaging, as much as we can be, and this is a good way to approach it.
Commissioner DeKerk?
Have we done anything on WTIP to let the community know that our response page, whatever we wanna call it, is more active? That you can get access to information on what's going on through that? I know Rena shares the heck out of it, and then I share the heck out of it, and I'm sure the rest of you do, but just getting that out, that that's a new thing. I know I still have people say, how come you shut down your Commissioner Facebook page? And I said, 'cause there are lots of people that work in the county that know more than I do that are really good at getting that information out instead of me.
So are you speaking specifically, Commissioner Kirk, to the Facebook?
To the community posts that are going out, like the missing person report went out, and someone sent me a text and said, you know, my friend's husband is missing, and it doesn't seem like anybody's doing anything. And I said, well, there's already been a media release, it's already posted here, it's already posted there, it's already posted here, so I know they're doing something. So, you know, people are still missing, that we are getting much better at our public information.
Communication about our communication?
Yeah, communication about our communication.
I have regular updates with Jay at WTIP, and I'm sure he'll be asking for an update on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Commissioner Sterling? I'm good. Great, thank you. Any meetings to note, meeting updates? WTIP interview, Commissioner Burschine, is it gonna work for you tomorrow? That's wonderful.
Yes. Two in a row.
Yeah, that's awesome. Very good. So, we don't have any anniversaries to celebrate today. We did last, we did that last week. And, but we will be recessing our regular meeting and reconvening as a committee of the whole at one o'clock, so, and for those of you who don't know, we'll be discussing the proposed Luton Township annexation. We'll be actually discussing the annexation process, not whether or not it's a valid thing to do, but the legal process, we'll be discussing it to have a better understanding of it. And we'll be discussing our consent agenda policy, RFP for Law Enforcement Facility Study, Personnel Committee, we'll report, our three committees are gonna be reporting, Personnel Committee, General Government and Budget Committee, Public Safety and Transportation Committee. Okay, so with that, we shall recess. Thank you. See you at one.